First matter of business, I'm sorry. Sorry. To clear this regular meeting of the Exeter Town Council's order. Last man clerk for a role.
Calhoun.
Here.
Frankie Gugorio.
Yeah.
Maycon.
Yeah.
Andy Andrews.
Here.
Ann Patterson.
Here.
First matter of business is public comment. Keith Lee has signed up first.
My name is Keith Lee. I'm the president of the Rhode Island Raccoon Hunters Association. I sent the letter in to the board expressing my concern about the vote that happened on June 3rd about the abandonment of Stony Lane. I'd like to appeal that vote and ask for equal access rights to that road. We travel, we have seventy members in the club and we travel that at least, you know, three, four times a week, a month rather. We pay taxes in the town. We're near and dear to keeping that safe with the fires and stuff that have happened in the past. The, we're looking to make improvements and things like that on the property, so we have functions and stuff up there. That's what I'm trying to do here is give us equal access to the road. I know that you guys need to conservancy one hundred percent access and we do have access, we do use that road. I have the letter from the post office because we weren't notified and they found out from the post office that they failed to give us that notification. So that's the first one. So that, based on that is what, you know, I'm appealing to the board that we do a re-vote so that we do get equal access to the road. We do have, on the plot from the town, it does show our access that borders, you know, Pexland and, you know, Lyle Conk, Tammy's and Louis Russell's. We border that, that's our official access to Stony Lane, but we'd like to have equal access permissions to the road.
Mr. President, please. I know we're not supposed to comment, if you don't think it's appropriate, I won't.
Well, this was going to be my comment. It's not on our agenda, however, it's a communication which we can remove, but is at the end of the meeting. Now, this is a rather unusual situation. I don't see.
I think you have to wait until.
For a daily way.
Somebody has to remove it and then you can discuss it, but you can't take any action on it.
Yes.
Other than to refer it either to another meeting or to refer it to someone else in your discretion if you discuss it. So it really would be inappropriate for the council to discuss anything at public comment.
So we'll wait till a three days.
You have to unfortunately.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you for your time.
And then you have to hope that somebody removes it from communications.
I suspect it will be removed. Do you have a copy of our agenda?
I do.
So you can see that it's there.
Yep.
Ben Halloway.
At the financial town meeting, I had made a statement about law fees and I had indicated that Mr. D. Gugorio was looking for, to make money off of the town and how it was costing us money. And I want to clarify the whole effect, to make it fair to everybody. In eight times in his two suits, it says, "Award plan, reasonable attorney fees, interest and cost, as well as any other relief that this court deems equitable and necessary." I interpret that as financial gain, so if I was wrong, I apologize after that. But to have to pay all of his attorney fees, the interest on which I don't know, the cost as which I don't know, and as well as any other relief this court deems equitable and necessary, I find that to be, like, not right. That's all I have to say.
Lauren Thern.
Lauren Thern from Goddard Road, back to the financial town meeting the other night as well. One of the things that I had worked on at the financial meeting was to have the increase in our taxes or spending of this year's budget. We come from a fund that the town already possesses that is an excess fund or, and it did fail, but there was kind of a feeling of I was trying to ask the town to do something fiscally irresponsible. My intention was not to go to ask the town to do something fiscally irresponsible. I do think having a fund to fall back on, to be able to pay bills before tax income comes in is a prudent thing to do and something the town should be doing. My concern with that fund is more that I didn't see it listed anywhere within the budget. I don't feel that the majority of the town people know that it exists. And it starts to feel like it's a hidden slush fund. I wanted to bring it to the forefront so that people are aware of it. And it also feels like, from what I understand, it's been accumulated by budgets being padded a little bit so that it was in excess. Because from comments I've heard from some of the council members, a number of years back, there wasn't that sort of a fund. And they kept borrowing money to pay bills around this time of year before tax incomes start to come in again. When the town felt it was prudent to set money aside to purchase or consider relocating transfer station, the taxpayer said sure, and the fund was set up and money was put into it every year. When the council felt that it was a good idea to have some funds set aside for replacement of this building, the members of the town's residents said, "Sure." And even this year, I believe, was another thirty thousand dollars that went into that fund, so that there's a fund. I do believe at the same time, if the council went to the residents and said, "We feel that we need to have X number of dollars as a buffer to make sure we can cover our expenditures that come in, and we need to put this much in to make it happen," the residents would probably say yes. And I think that would be a much more transparent and agreeable way to do it for the residents of this town, rather than finding out that, you know, there's almost four million dollars of funds that really aren't accounted for in the budget and we're not really, as residents, being permitted to know about that. So just so the council, but also people within this room right now, understand, that was my intention, to make sure people in this town realize these things are happening within our town. Thank you.
Effie Lopez, I believe.
I signed that by accident.
Did you sign here and you didn't need to?
Yes. I thought I had to sign in for some reason.
Are you here for one of the agenda?
Yes, yeah.
I understand, but thank you for trying to cover your bases.
No problem, sorry.
Occasionally, council members sign up to speak since nothing's on the agenda relative. And so I also just signed a sheet because I'm going to say something, but first, Manny, you sign. Would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, it's the first time I'm speaking, I'm a new-time council person, and it was the first time I've attended a financial town meeting as a council member. And I must say, I found it a very interesting process and also a very disappointing process in some regards. And it seemed like this meeting was not the smoothest thing that ran. And it seemed it was not smooth because of really one issue, and that was a personnel issue and a raise that was going to go to a particular town employee. There's really no need to say who the town employee was or what the issue was. Honestly, I don't know what the issue was, but it became clear to me, sitting at the table, that it was a personal agenda issue rather than a town issue. And I took exception to that. I don't think, especially as sitting council members, we should be sitting up at the financial town meeting espousing our position and riling up the crowd. And I think that's what happened. And I would hope from this point forward, every town council member will conduct himself or herself with professionalism, with dignity, and will be a good representative of the town, rather than having them get up and start yelling for votes and paper ballots because it did nothing but waste everyone's time. We work very hard on this council. You folks take your time out of your hard day to come to meetings, to give your opinions, which we respect, but I don't respect is somebody on the town council being up there on the stage and riling up a crowd because of a personal agenda. Personal agendas do not belong on the floor when you're a council member. If you have a personal agenda that you want to bring forward, step down from the council table, resign as a council member, and then you can yell and hoop all you want at the meeting. But if you're a council member, I expect you, we all expect you, you expect us to act with professionalism, with courtesy, and to treat everyone the way you want to be treated. Thank you, Mr. President.
And the reason I signed this sheet is because I too was very concerned about the process of the financial town meeting. I've heard people comment that there was something wrong with the process. It's what we've done here forever. It's an old, old New England tradition. It's not ideal. But before I even speak to that, the last comment made, or one of the last by Mr. Thern, you did, did you say that there was a four million dollar fund, or did you say four? I thought I heard you say four.
Yes, I did, I said four.
Yeah, I don't believe there's four million dollars sitting anywhere. I believe.
If I remember the fund.
I believe two, well, I'm sorry that the treasurer who said she wasn't going to come because she wasn't feeling well today, she could verify. I've never heard four million dollars, and I'm just going to ask the council, do you recall when rebuilding the budget, four million dollars?
No.
Do you recall approximately two?
Yeah, there's.
Yeah.
And with regard to borrowing against, you know, to pay bills, that's not appropriate. It's happened in the past. I just want to correct, when you say this publicly, that we have four million dollars, I personally find that extremely offensive. Now, I know you want to combine, you want to continue to talk, don't you? It was not four million dollars, so if you'd have come here in this public forum and say we have four million dollars, I find that offensive. It's not true.
Is it possible to get a copy of the minutes?
Not, well, I'll tell you this, and I really don't want to do this back and forth because this is not really what we're here for tonight. We've got business to conduct. But when I hear this kind of thing, and I've heard it many times through the years, misstatements, if you're talking about the minutes of the financial town meeting, is that what you're asking for?
That is correct.
There will be a transcript provided.
That is correct.
And the clerk will indicate, will ask her, indicate to us at a town, at a town council meeting when that's available, and it's always available for the public to review. But I'm just telling you, and this council has confirmed, it's not four million dollars. And I'm just sorry that our treasurer isn't here to confirm what I'm saying. That being said, okay, I'm not going to speak again about what you're saying, but I'd like to continue. Or did you want to stand up so we can do a back and forth?
No.
Okay, thank you. That's my comment.
Thank you.
What I'd like to say about the financial town meeting, because many people said, many people said, "We need to do away with this." Immediately, I had heard people say, "Let's go on all-day referendum." That's what some towns have done. And did you hear the news about what happened in the town of Hopkinton? Sorry, but I haven't read it yet, and I wanted to do a little bit of teaching, it's what I used to do. Hopkinton is going that route, and guess what their charter must say? If the budget isn't approved, any additional funds that are necessary, like for their schools, because they have a three, three-school district, you know, there are three towns, Charahoe, their increase was significant. And apparently, their charter revision says, if a budget isn't approved, which it wasn't, because one hundred and eighteen people voted no, one hundred and fourteen people voted yes, that's a total of two hundred and thirty-two people in the town of Hopkinton, the budget wasn't approved, now they're going to take, guess what, the money that's owed that wasn't approved by these people, guess what I heard on the news? It's coming out of the reserve fund. Well, let's not go that route, folks, because guess what? In two or three years, what do you think would happen to us? Sorry, but I'm taking this time, since you all like to speak to us, I just wanted to speak to you. Thank you for listening. I'd like to move on if we could. I promise not to make that ahead of time. Number four, acknowledgements. Now, we see on the printed, I'm just going to say on behalf of the town council, happy birthday to I, remember what this is all about. The town offices will be closed. Those are the offices located here in our town hall, that's become an inside situation between the clerk and myself. This is actually the town clerk's office, not really, but we call this building, because it used to be, but now it's different. Anyway, it doesn't matter. So anything from the council, please? Any comments, any acknowledgements? Regarding item five and the approval of the agenda order, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Seconded.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the agenda order. Those in favor say aye. Opposed, so voted. With regard to the consent agenda, as we work our way through, there is a voucher which we will process. I'd like to remove the tax assessors' report, which we'll address later in the, on the agenda when reports are addressed. Are there other reports that any member of the council wishes to remove?
I'd like to remove number sixteen.
Number sixteen. Regional school building committee member. Regarding communications, which communications were members of the council wished to remove? Frank, do you have any?
I don't.
And Michael?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
I was also going to pull thirty-two, Mr. President, so I'll speak to that.
Dan? Thirty-three. There was number one for August, there was another one that came in, closing that was for September, September, September. Yeah. Yeah, those are, those are all the communications.
Yeah, they're number seventeen also.
Seventeen? I'm sorry?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. There are several I didn't mention that are relative to tonight's meeting, in regard to appointments that we might or might not make with various positions. And I've not pulled those because I know we're going to address them during the course of the meeting. Any issues regarding the schedule? Any bills, bill sheet, abatements? There are no assessors' abatements this month. Minutes of the June 3rd meeting. Then I will, I will move that we approve the consent agenda as slightly amended. Second.
Second.
Discussion, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So voted. Regarding number seven, personnel board and conservation commission, we're still holding them open, we have had some addressed, not quite enough. We have no resignations, the clerk is not noting any. Madam clerk, this is good. We have appointments, item C. Just for your information, publicly, looking to fill an open position on the Reynolds Charitable Trust Committee. The young lady was forced to resign as she was moving out of town. Madam clerk, I see no response. Would you continue to pose, please? Public make note, Reynolds Charitable Trust, it's a most worthwhile group of people. There's a planning board member vacancy. We have had some letters of interest, one in particular dated June 19th from current sitting member Scott Malar.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
That we approve Scott Malar as the, as a regular planning board member.
Okay, is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion is made and seconded under discussion. We do have a letter from Mr. Malar dated June 19th, and what helped, among the pieces of the letter is this opening paragraph. He says, "The purpose of this letter is to express my interest in reapplying to be a member of the board. I'm currently an alternate, but would be interested to become a full-voting member of the planning board should a position become available." He goes on to speak about his previous experience on the board some years ago. So for the record, I'd like it to be indicated that he did write that letter, indicating he will have still serving that capacity. Other discussion?
He is a long time, he has been a long time board member in the charitable planning board.
Other discussion? Motion on the floor, a quote-unquote, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Regarding planning board alternate member.
Again, I would like to nominate Michael Viveros as the alternate planning board member. I think he's very qualified, highly qualified to sit on the board. He's a registered architect, has been for quite some time, and he has the technical skills, I think, that are appropriate for the planning board. We do very fortunate, in fact, we have several architects and engineers sitting on our board, and I'd like to continue that, and I think we have one of the best planning boards, Piffenup, which is on the board in the state in terms of qualified members, technically qualified. So I'd nominate him for that.
So the motion on the floor, is there a second? Is there a second?
Seconded.
And discussion, and discussion, Dan, of course.
We've got another advocate here, Gina Thern. And when we look at the makeup of the planning board now, we have a retired engineer, we've got an active plant surveyor, one gentleman's a retired teacher, we have an architect on that board. Bob that just left the board was job supervisor with Gilbane, and we've just named Scott Malar there, who's retired from DEM. And when you read Mrs. Thern's letter, I think you really need to get someone that's working on the land here in farm, working with farms. I think you need to get a little different makeup on that board.
Other discussion? A motion has been made and seconded, I believe. Yes, madam clerk? I'll call the vote. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one. Regarding the zoning board of review member. We have a letter of interest from a currently serving member, Mr. St. Lawrence. I don't think we have other letters.
I'll make the motion to appoint Mr. St. Lawrence. I have been witness of the last zoning board hearing, which was very chaotic, to say the least, thanks to some unruly members in the audience, and I thought Mr. Lawrence handled that situation very professionally and appropriately.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'll second that motion. I did some checking, I think Mr. St. Lawrence has done a fine job for the town of Exeter, and I'm happy to second that.
Okay. Motion is made and seconded, I, under discussion. I, I was not present, but I did certainly hear some reports, if you will, or feedback from a meeting that I found very, personally very concerning, because I'd been involved here for years, and I don't keep telling people that. I've never conducted myself in a way that I understand someone conducted themselves at the meeting, but my question is, Mr. St. Lawrence, you were chairing the meeting?
Yep.
But you're not the chair. You, so how did that happen, if you don't mind me asking?
The vice chair. The chair was away.
Not president.
Family issues.
So, so the situation was challenging, is that to say the least?
A little bit, but it was, you know, I couldn't hear a lot was going on in the back because of other people talking, so.
Well, and I listened to the motion made by, by Mr. D., who, Frank, who apparently was here, he said he was.
He was there.
So apparently, you're commended for the way in which you handle a difficult situation. Would you call that difficult or just run-of-the-mill?
It was interesting.
Interesting, okay. Well, from what I heard, I would call it somewhat difficult, but apparently you handled it as you should have. Well, thank you for that. Is there other discussion? Call the vote. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for continuing your interest. Hopefully, you won't be put in that situation too often, if ever. North Kingstown Preserve at Rolling Greens Liaison, we do have an expression of interest from a member of the planning board. I would move that we appoint Mike Yves Rasesco to that position.
Seconded.
Second. Motion is made and seconded, discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. We see no expiring terms on our agenda, which is good. So please remember, folks, that we are looking for someone to serve on the Reynolds Charitable Trust. Stop in any time at the town hall if you'd like some more information. And I believe that our positions have been filled. We had no public hearings tonight, so we move to new business. And the first item of business on the agenda is a, is a mission statement for our Economic Development Task Force, which we, which we established last month, and we charged our council assistant Ken Finley with preparing something for us to review. Ken, would you mind?
So I put really, basically, internet, three-paragraph mission statement.
Again.
I think you'll find acceptable and in line with some of the other conditions that have been proposed, but then.
Ken, I think, I think there are some folks that we have appointed to this task force that came, we invited folks to come tonight and because we're going to move this, move this process forward. Ken, would you, would you be kind enough, or would you like me to read what you've submitted?
I'll read it.
I beg your pardon?
I have a reading voice.
I don't, I have a voice nobody probably wants to hear, but I'll be happy to read it. Ken, Ken did tell me that he, that he had something that he was going to share with us tonight, and this, I asked Ken not to be married to it, I mean, not, it's not fixed in concrete, so look at it, council, let's review. Mission statement, the task force here, here in, or hereafter referred to as task force, shall advise and make recommendations to the town council on matters related to economic development that include, but are not limited to, economic development incentives, current business climate, business attraction and retention, marketing opportunities, and other issues and tools that may promote economic development to the town of Exeter. The task force shall provide input and expertise on ways to encourage and help businesses and individuals to invest in the town, create jobs, and increase the tax base, which ultimately leads to a better quality of life for all Exeter residents. The task force members shall work in a coordinated fashion, respect all points of view, and in carrying out its duties and tasks, shall adhere to the town's comprehensive plan and provide suggestion, suggested revisions to enhance the plan when necessary to implement any economic development recommendation. Well, Ken, I did ask you to be somewhat succinct and, but, but somewhat broad and all-encompassing, so that looks, personally, it looks good to me, but let's see if council members.
Well, I think it's excellent. I think the bottom line is we're looking to increase revenue income to the town, and I think.
The mentions here.
Yeah, I think the important thing that, that he mentions here is, and other issues and tools that may promote, it says economic development, I think that would be increasing revenue income to the town, because there may be something other than economic development. I don't know of anything offhand, but hopefully this, this task force can come up with something, come up with something. So I wouldn't, I'd like to keep it as comprehensive as possible in terms of how the approach of that issue.
Well, what I read when I was going over all the EDC statements and their plans, this is, this is quite a process that you're going to have to go through, and there's a lot of work involved, and this right here doesn't limit you to a certain topic. Anything wide open, this gives you the option to be flexible and creative.
It seems like it's, it's broad enough to allow thoughts that want to come forward from folks in the community to talk about it, bring it forward. I mean, I think you were the one, one of the ones that first.
Yes.
Thought about that, so what are you thinking?
I think the, the mission statement is excellent, well done, and as was said previously, it's general enough to go in just about any direction, and looking forward to the task force getting together.
Dan, comments?
No, sure, it's sweet, I like it.
Ken, thank you. We said we wrote mission statement as the agenda, I know, we should actually speak more about the actual task force under, in order to, in order to implement the mission, we need to get it set up, and we have, I think we have two, nine members. I did not remove, we had another communication here from someone by the name of Chris Asura. I, I only heard of him through the accessories office, apparently someone has expressed interest in being involved, it's any, I didn't remove it, but as we're talking about setting up the commission, I, I would think it would be appropriate to include this show. So I, I would move to add Chris Asura as a member of the commission.
I'll second the motion.
Yes, it is, I meant it to be.
I'll second.
Motion is made and seconded to add Mr. Chris Asura. Madam Clerk is notifying him. He's not present tonight, I'm seeing that, because, can I just ask, some other folks, I see two here, other folks that, of the nine we appointed, I see two, three, and four, we have four, and five, and, good, thank you for, for coming out, and thank you for putting, footed with this. Don't run away right away, just go and see what happens. You know, can I speak, Manny, about your suggestion about the Commerce Commission? To him, I'm sorry, and those in favor of Mr. Asura say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So excited to get it going. Manny, you spoke about the Commerce Commission, I, I would think, this is my thought, once they've met and they meet, they introduce and talk amongst themselves, maybe if they did the second time they need, there might be someone that could come, you know, from, if someone can work that.
Yes, I, I reached out to the State Economic Development Corporation, and I have a contact person, so whoever is, whoever's elected chairman or chairwoman, they can reach out to me and I'll give them.
That sound like a plan?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you want a motion on the mission statement?
We're not doing that. Well, let's, let's approve the mission statement and try to set up the commission then. Thank you, you have to keep me going, you know, I just want to keep going.
I'll make a motion.
You want to move, you want to move to approve?
Move it as.
Or second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded by Manny. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Thank you, Ken, very much, for putting this, getting us on track. There's another, there's another item regarding establishing or conducting the mission or carrying it out that's been addressed here prior to the meeting tonight, and that is the nature of the, of the commission vis-à-vis the state regulations regarding open meetings. And I think we need to be sure in this process that we establish the necessity or not. I think there might be a necessity, Madam Clerk suggested that we.
Yeah, I worry about that, I don't, it seems to me that the.
Just a minute, I'm sorry.
He's fine, he's got.
Is he okay?
Yeah. He's got seizures.
I don't know, I'm sorry, it is. Somebody, somebody's going out.
He's out there.
Yeah, it is a few people out there.
Yeah, the, the opinions that are coming out of the Attorney General's office concerning boards and commissions that are essentially formal enough to be appointed by the town council, set up, mission statement with, with definitive duties that are required by the town council, tend to be viewed as the type of organizations, the type of committees, commissions that are required to adhere to the Open Meetings provisions, so it will be necessary for someone, that minutes, accord any votes to the planning, and post them, and to, to comply with other Open Meetings Act requisites, and I'm sure the clerk can help whoever that is, to set up a standard way of doing that. It's not, really, it's, minutes don't have to be tremendously detailed, they just do have to show rhetoric and, and, so Lynn's, Lynn's an expert at that, so she can help.
All right, all right, thank you for that. I mean, we chatted about this for sure prior to today's meeting, I think several of you have been quiet, and you should, and I just, I just said to Lynn, not like Lynn's, because their, their record of what we do here are very comprehensive, but sure, it's perfectly acceptable. And when you speak about votes, I think what you, you would be speaking about a recommendation that they might agree to make to us, not that they're establishing.
No, no.
On a, on a recommendation. So, that being said, I think what we need to do, and then other people on that stuff, it's turned to Ken, turned to Ken rescue has just come for him. I think that was a, that was a.
He'll be fine, right? Yeah. He's got real bad back spasms, and he ends up going into a seizure. He's got his pills, I mean, he'll probably be fine in like five minutes.
Well, they just may attend to him and help.
Yeah, he'll be also.
Okay. The same first. I'm sorry, you know, I, I intend, I tend Catholic mass, where I've seen people have issues, but the mass continues, I'm sorry, we're not doing that here. We're not doing that here, but he's okay.
Yeah, he's. He's been to the club in, in Baton before, and.
Thank you.
There's not a lot we can do for him, which is even from the finish.
Okay, thank you. So Ken, I think the next thing would be for you to try to find a, a time, you know, a date here when this room is available, and then maybe send out a notice as an organizational meeting.
An orientation.
An orientation, a company, and review the statement.
We've gone before.
Right, and.
You go swim in.
Ken, can we let you work with Lynn to boil this together?
Can people, one meeting or all seven?
I know summer's probably not the best time to kick something off, but maybe, maybe one meeting, and then, you know, the second meeting, and then start in a fall in earnest, or, you know, but maybe get people together once and move ahead. So, thank you, Ken.
I know it's not a agenda, but should we have a, establish a liaison, council liaison, to this group? Or can we do this at?
Well, you can, you can place it for discussion next month, but you add to new business liaison, council liaison to the development, to the task force.
Are you going to wait to do the meeting after the council liaison?
No, no, I think they can, sure. Ken, you can go ahead and set things up whenever it works for you. Council, any other discussion under this item? I think we took care of what we needed to do here. Thank you, thank you, Ken. Next item, one that's extremely important for us here, the town hall, and that is the addressing the issue of an information technology manager. Well, any one of us can give you a brief update, is for years we worked with, with the town of North Kingstown, and the agency, with their IT department came and serviced what we needed here in the building, but it, it hasn't always worn, run as efficiently as we hoped it would, and there are offices here that have gone without the kind of support they needed, and so, over months of discussion, work sessions, we, and including an item in our financial town meeting, we have come to the conclusion that we need to hire an information technology manager, not, not full-time. We, we appropriated, taxpayers appropriated twenty thousand dollars for a compensation for such a position. Ken, you've created a, I believe, Ken, you.
We were.
Several people worked, and said, can you speak to the process of creating this, please?
It was, once again, you know, using what other cities and towns have used, that are comparable to us, and also the total O-NET, which is a common labor website that provides job description, which is based on. So I think it's reasonable for the need for the replacement of our process going in, going out, you know, yeah, this is, all this needs is the council to direct, the person's going to work directly for the council, can direct that person to do whatever they wish.
Other communities clearly have such a person in place, many have full-line people, because technology and computer use is key to, to the offices speaking to each other for your, for your tax bills being issued in a timely manner. Can you believe it? I mean, they used to be late, now they're not due till September, you just got them, so you've got time to plan. But this is all part of a technology support in-house that needs to be improved, moved forward, and so that's what we're doing. Ken, thank you, and, and all of you that work on this, Madam Clerk, and our treasurer, and several others here pulled together to create this, comments, people, council members.
Mr. President, may I ask, any free, I, I had asked a while ago, and I don't remember, I read it earlier today, and I'm not sure if it was in there, about the job rate duties, and one of the things being required to help with the town website, who website is that in there?
No, but it could be all the Google results.
You think it's, you think it's covered sufficiently in there? I just don't want anyone to have any misconceptions if they take the job, here are the job duties, now we're asking them to do something else, and going to say, hey, it's not part of the job description we gave.
Well, the first line is job responsible, but not limited to.
Okay, that's fine, if you think it's.
Am I allowed to speak? Well, Madam Clerk, Ken.
We couldn't list everything.
Yeah, no worries.
Things, things we don't know about.
Sure, okay.
Generally, we don't engage the public unless, remember, I'm not sure, sir.
Well, I happen to have expertise in, I'm the vice president of human resources in my former life, so I can answer the question that will solve your, your question.
Okay, about, about the question Mr. Andrews asked you made, the question which is asked?
Yes.
About the website?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, the council have an objection?
No.
No, go ahead.
So you may put, and other duties as assigned, and that will cover you.
But it does say, but not limited to, so, you know, they're articulated, so, I know you've, you've grabbed.
The very end, end statement of any job description should almost say, and other duties as assigned, and that covers you.
This is just a notice of vacancy, it's not a job description.
Sorry?
It's not a job description.
I thought he said job description, I'm sorry.
I did say job description.
Right.
Yeah.
It, it kind of is, but it, it.
I'm just trying to help, I'll, I'll back it off, I'm just trying.
No, no, and I appreciate that, thank you. Ken? Manny, you accept this?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay. Questions? Comments? Is there, is there a motion to move to advertise, please, post, please?
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
I'll second.
Motion is made to post this as a vacancy. I would suggest we first post, we let people know here that it's a position that we're establishing. I would post for, well, thirty days, or, well, at least until the next council meeting. If we had no response, then I think we'll have to cast a why to have, but why don't we first post? I mean, there's been a lot of discussion already about this, people know, North Kingstown knows, and just, just, just to let everybody else out here know, there's been a big push to share services amongst communities, especially smaller ones. When we tried this approach, it was, a lot of people said, isn't that just what it should be? But we weren't really sharing, we were, we had nothing to offer them, but they obviously had something to offer us. The Public Works Department used to do lots of sharing, except when our Public Works Department needed equipment that another town had, guess what? They needed it too. So we've begun to solve that problem by being less dependent on others. So is a move to post internally, a motion to post, I think I made, or did someone else second? Manny made, thank you, Manny, the second has been made, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you again, Ken, for bringing this forward. Ken, do you have a comment?
And in more of a piece, we do have Jim Andrew that finished the consultant's position on June thirtieth, the one he was with last night, she told me, I mean, to, to June thirtieth, Chris Lea, and I know this will be immediate now, that's for the moment, I hope, the transfer of North Kingstown, the vendor, so I would.
I want to move that his services be continued and.
Until his position.
Until his position is filled, and Ken and I spoke of a very important thing, Ken. I'm moving to have him continue to assist us.
What, that's a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that a motion.
I'll second.
Motion is made to have Mr. Andrew continue to support as needed, because he already has proved to be invaluable in this transition. Discussion, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Item nine C. This is where the young lady in the audience may come in on this. That's okay. We have a memo, an inter-office memo from town clerk to us, and this is what it reads, which defeats of what the license presently allows them to serve outdoors in front of their units. And then there are old plans which are attached, they wish to move outdoors serving to the side of unit one oh six toward loop two. Then there are new plans, which is reviewed, I hope, presently when people are eating outside, cars drive, drive right up to the tables, dining is interrupted by food traffic into the restaurant. The side of the building will be a more pleasant experience. Keep in mind, this comes to us from our town clerk, so clearly, she was oppressed by your plea for our attention.
Thank you.
And I'm not even sure that she eat, but she may eat, well, I bet she does. She probably has already been killed. There will be a bar area, however, so glad you added that, Madam Clerk. As, oh, as required, this is important, as required, the area will be surrounded by an iron fence.
Yes, which goes up tomorrow morning.
Oh, I'm sure Madam Clerk insisted on that, too. There will be a bar area, however, it will be mainly seating, there will not be draft being served from the bars, the license does not allow it at this time. Drinks can be served outdoors but not prepared. And then there's a section of Laura Allen General Law that's cited here, and it provides that advertising is not necessary in this circumstance. The Department of Business Regulation indicates a plan should be submitted to the town council for consideration. And Attorney Marusak was consulted, indicating that, indicating, or indicated that he agreed. I, I just wanted to read, because I, I've never quite received this sort of communication from Madam Clerk, and I thought it was, was quite appropriate.
Thank you.
That you obviously convinced her it was very important for us to consider your request, which I think we have. Is there a motion to approve the request?
Make that motion, Mr. President. I'll make that motion, Mr. President. I think it's the next line idea to have more outdoor seating and extra for restaurant catering. So, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Can I just have one?
Of course.
This is on the 165 side?
No, not 165, Route 2.
Route 2.
Well, this is half these. Okay. I'm thinking of...
It's okay.
I'm thinking of extra pizza.
Oh, no.
Okay.
There's a reason why I like to reuse them.
Yes, I appreciate that.
I'm just, I'm really proud of it. Anyway. So, there's a motion made. A second, is a discretion. We're just wishing you well with your new location. Don't let anybody get hurt.
No, absolutely not.
Obviously, the fence is going up.
Yes.
So, apparently, you assume that we're going to think it's a great idea.
Well, no, I have a real...
I prefer you put it up tomorrow rather than...
Yes, tomorrow. See, it's going to work tomorrow. Kind of the phone call from...
Good. Another discussion? Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. We wish you very luck.
Thank you.
And safe.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Have a good summer, too.
You too, and have a happy fourth.
Thank you. Sorry. I didn't mean to make you wait. Just, I read it, I... Item D. Frank, I believe you asked this item to be placed on the agenda.
Yes. Kevin Brunon threw the intersection at 102 and Route 3 at that light. And I find that at night approaching Route 102, either from the northbound lane, northbound lane or southbound lane, it creates very difficult...
Would you...
Dark, and it's hard to see exactly where the road is to turn in. And I know that that intersection has been a big problem in the past before they had put the light on. Some serious fatality, accident. And I think that the O.P. has a great job in putting the light in. But if one little item's pretty done, I think that it needs to be lighted in order to be able to safely make an approach and make that turn.
Would you like us to write the D.O. to...
Write a letter to your question after he put a light in.
You've heard Frank's request. Is there a second to this motion?
Sure, I'll second that.
There's a motion made to send a letter to the O.P. requesting some lighting at the intersection of Route 3 and 102. On this side, I suppose, but the other side is lighted, isn't it? Or either side is lighted.
There's no, there's no lights there. It's just...
Just make sure appropriate lighting is established for security and safety, for safety reasons. Discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. I'm sorry, Ken, we shouldn't have moved ahead before I asked if you would be kind enough to hand those copies to...
Yeah, I have nothing.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I should have just not moved ahead like I did. Did all of you folks on the task force receive a copy? Thank you. Sorry. Item E. I placed this on the agenda, actually, I, well, yes, I placed it on the agenda because during our budget development sessions, Town Sergeant had come forward. And he, we discussed, he brought to our attention the issue of security cameras that he felt were important to have outside the building, as sometimes police vehicles, not police, I'm sorry, patrol vehicles parked there. And also for inside the building, because there is no internal security camera. There used to be, I think, years ago, but the light stayed a long ago, and they haven't been around here. I had asked that security cameras, Town Hall's security cameras be placed on the agenda. That is assuming that we're talking all over that, but... So, it's not only the clerk's office, which technically this is. Once upon a time, before any of this was added, there were two parts, a library and a clerk's office. And there are many traditionalists that cling to the concept that this is the clerk's office. And I understand that. Not even a clerk, but some others who work for her, I know. Steve, those that grew up there, understand what I mean, including me. So, we're talking about this, and I asked Town Sergeant Donovan, could you just speak to a bit about that proposal? He says he's got his file and has to make it come. Tell us what your thing is.
Like you said, I feel it's a security issue, that the entire building is without cameras. I understand it's the only town building we have now. It's without, both for, you know, physical security, the building itself, you know, a monitoring system, and inside, when we have people working here, you know, they handle cash, locations. We have meetings where, you know, we might have, let's say, disturbance or more, things that we want to look back at, find out exactly what happened at a particular meeting. Those things would all be taken care of if we put a camera system in the building, as well as outside, the whole physical security of the building. So, that's why I brought it forward. And I did meet with the people currently bottom of the building. And they gave us a general proposal of how we could accomplish it, and amount of money that they thought if I take to accomplish it. And that's kind of where we're at right now. So, I would just say that I would appreciate it if you...
Move forward.
Can you move, move forward with it, so we can get it done?
I think we should. One of the things, if you remember when we spoke at the budget, one of the issues, budget work sessions, one of the issues we spoke to was some funding. And because the vehicles can be protected as well, it may be parked here. Some of that protection could come from the monies that are collected through detail work. You know, that's done, so that tax dollars don't really necessarily have to be spent. Is that safe to say?
As part of our consideration of camps, we're also looking at putting additional equipment in the cars that we don't have now, that we would want to detect. So, it's just, you know, that's another investment that we want to detect. If we're leaving cars out here. So, it just, it all falls under that same realm. And the Treasurer felt that, you know, when we discussed that that's appropriate use.
Discussion here amongst the Manny, anyone... I believe that we develop an RFP with some assistance. Ken, can you, folks, Steve, I know you've already had some experience.
Yeah, we've installed four different systems now, townwide, different facilities. The, you just have to do a design-build RFP similar to what we did with the air conditioning and heating upgrade. That way, they come in, they review the building, the outside conditions. They design the system for you. You tell them the grade cameras you want, so they won't get too expensive. And they'll all come in within reasonable pricing. The building used to have cameras in certain locations in the past, but it was a very old system. And it was removed 15 years ago, approximately.
And I know you say your garage is secured that way.
Yeah, Michelle the garage.
Yeah, Michelle.
A library as well, so transfer stations managed.
No, no, I didn't make a motion. I don't, but I would, I would move that we develop an RFP so that we can, with the fact that you're up to good.
We also have funding in the Ambulance Clerk's Office Upgrade Fund. The building upgrade fund.
Good. So, what, okay, if there's a second, we'll continue to discuss.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
I'm not sure what the plan is now. Obviously, I agree that we should have security cameras on the outside of the buildings. Inside, I'm not so sure. I don't know. Fundamentally, there's a little bit of a problem I have placing them inside, unless there's a known problem. What I would suggest, and maybe you've already done this, and this is why you're coming up with this suggestion, is we should do whatever any other town hall is doing. If they have them inside, where cash is collected, then we should put them in there. If they don't have them, we probably shouldn't be one of the first ones to do it. I think employee morale, especially in a small town hall like this, is very, very important. And I think that's a consideration that should be looked into. So, I would just suggest that before you make requests or proposals to put cameras inside, and if you haven't done it, maybe check with some other town halls to see what they're doing. Outside, absolutely.
Well, okay, well, is there a second? And then we'll discuss what we want to put in the RFP.
I'll second.
Motion is made and seconded. Manny's already discussed. Can we, can you create or craft an RFP and then bring it to our attention perhaps at the August meeting? Or give it to us ahead of time, and we can, you know, if there are concerns? I'm not sure I totally agree with, you know, what Manny said, but I know, I understand your reasoning, I think, for it, that people don't want to be watched. But I don't think, well, here's my thought. When I spoke to Bill about this, one of the issues is where it's going to be, the monitoring equipment's going to be. And he suggested, which I think is the best idea, that it be in his office, where there's no access except for by him as the outside, the Town Sergeant. And only if it needs to be reviewed, because there's some issue. I mean, I can only speak to my, I know my wife has a business. Things can be watched, and occasionally, they've needed to be watched, because something's happened, something's left, something's been taken. But it's not routine, but I don't think it's a bad idea. Tell me.
We're not allowed to talk, right? Is that correct?
Well...
I'm just asking, I don't know.
Well, ordinarily, not, because we're discussing, but are you Mr. Cole?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I know.
No, it's okay.
Because I know you've already helped here with a number of issues. So, because he's already been assisting the clerk in developing some, obviously, you know...
I'm happy to, I'm happy to talk offline if it makes it easier. I don't want to create anything.
No, 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 because you have some experience with security cameras.
I do, and can I make a comment?
Sure.
The comment I want to make is you want to make sure, we have union contracts here. You're not allowed to surveil employees, okay? So, we want to make sure that the unions are okay if you decide to go down the road of putting something inside your building. So, you're going to want to make sure that the unions are okay with that.
I hesitate to continue the discussion to ask if our public police director did that, but that's all right.
No, I'm, I'm just breaking it up, because it's a pitfall.
Union was asked.
That you will fault, that we will fault.
I'm sorry. You see, you see, he echoes your concern.
Union was asked. We have interior cameras on all occasions.
Okay.
But, thank you.
Just looking out for you.
No, thank you for making this point. Appreciate it.
I've been through this. I promise you, I've been through it.
Appreciate a concerned citizen. Appreciate one that's instructive and not disruptive. I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
I know that. And I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
I have one comment to make. I appreciate what Manny's concerned with interior security. I think as far as the RFP is concerned, it should be comprehensive, including the interior. And at the time, we review it, then we can decide to what extent.
Sure.
We may or may not revise security cameras inside. But at least we'll have a place for the entire company inside of the private.
We can break it out as a line, too.
So, other discussion of the motion. Hearing none, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
And would you work a little bit together to put something together for us, please? Thank you. I bet Madam Clerk will be very glad to, won't she? Thank you. Your go-to for everything. Steve, you're next with item F. It's a request to extend the bid for New England Asphalt Services.
The New England Asphalt, those, the conventional chip seals that we put on most roads in the town at the cost of $1.47. They're willing to extend that another year, which will be the final time we can extend that bid. It will have to be rebid next year at this time. They've done, they've done good work, and they're holding their price for a third year. And other towns have been out recently up to bid, and they've been higher. So, I would recommend extending the bid the final year.
And you say you're happy with the work that you're doing?
Yes.
Including what we've seen recently on some of our secondary...
No, that's a different process, but...
Oh, that's not, okay. Well, this is the request from Public Works Supervisor Department, Matt Jack. Is there a motion?
I'll make the, I'll make a motion to approve this request.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the request to extend the bid for New England Asphalt Services for another year. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Well, I see also, Mr. Matt Jack has another item on the agenda. Department of Public Works requests to proceed to bid for a public works truck.
Yeah, Financial Town Meeting, I was approved to purchase another 40,000 GBW claw truck to replace our 1999 International that we currently have. That truck being 20 years old, I don't believe it'll make another winter, but I realistically need it to. Because it takes about eight months from the time you award the bid to the time we receive the bid.
I remember during, during the budget sessions, when you were present, and you spoke to this, and we all said, your truck is 20 years old.
20 years.
You're trying to keep it pieced together and trying to...
Well, I put a, I put a used motor out of one of our '96 trucks in it, just to keep it running, last one.
Oh, okay.
As well as some other components. I have, I'm out of spare parts, but it's, I don't want to invest in new parts.
Unless you have your own junkyard over there.
We're down to nothing.
Yeah, well, you know what else, and I appreciate, and I think we all do, the fact that we're at a point where we can purchase instead of lease to purchase, because it reduces our debt. And I commend both you and Treasurer for reducing the debt that we have consistently.
Yeah, we'll be using the same basic specifications from the last three or four trucks, except the hook lift trucks. The combination body.
So, if we approve, you're ready to go?
Yes.
We move to approve your request to go to bid?
So moved.
A second? No second? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Thanks, Steve. Regarding unfinished business. We don't, we haven't had a discussion of any projects recently, though we probably...
We'll put on the works.
We probably should, because I know the old town hall is...
For a while.
Impact费 study is important.
Steve, don't leave. All right, so we have the proposed final version of the impact fee study that you were sent. And it contains two areas where we see that we, as a group, met and talked about what the impact fees could be collected for, due to the growth, projected growth. The schools are not eligible, because it's not enough of objective growth to collect any money. And the only other projects that were available that we looked at were the Town Hall. But thinking that within 10 years, you have to fund the project in full, and all give the money back. And so, if we don't have enough money to fund the Town Hall in 10 years, then it goes back to the first factor. So, we decided on two projects as a group. The lead will be funded, but the impact fee study itself is funded from the impact fees. And then the other two, I'll let Steve explain right now, because I'll butcher it and try to talk about what the new projects are based on the role of impact in the meeting, so...
The new project, the Public Works, it impacts if every taxpayer gets benefited on an asphalt road in the wintertime and benefit in summer for dust control from the same product. Basically, it's a salt brine system. It's made from solar salt, or even rock salt, it's clean enough. Basically, you just dissolve salt in a lot of water. Basically, big tank stares it up, turns it into a brine, which sets in suspension. You spray it out on the roads ahead of a snow event, and it'll last up to seven days on the road. All right, dry. If it's wet, it goes right into, starts working immediately, so it can be worked. It's meant to work ahead of a storm. We apply it the day of, day before. Snow stops to fall at 3:00 in the morning. You're not calling people in, because the salt's already there doing the job for you. But then your people can come in, you save money on overtime that way. Narragansett's been a pilot program for quite a few years now. They're very successful. They've saved quite a bit of money. Basically, what we'd be buying is tanks for our hook trucks to apply the material. Basically, what we'd be buying is tanks for our hook trucks to apply the material. And we would put on some saddle tanks on our existing spreaders in order to pre-wet our sand and salt mixture that goes out to make it last longer. And we'd be able to use less material, so which also saves you money. So it's basically tanks, applicators that go on two of our hook trucks. These pull on just like we do the spreaders of the dump body. And we'll have to put in a well, a commercial well to provide enough water in this process.
At the garage?
At, at the garage.
So this is your project.
It has to be a new project, has to be new equipment. You cannot use these funds for replacement of existing equipment. It has to be a new project, something that's going to impact as many residents as possible. This impacts just about everybody, whether it's winter or summer. Summer, you get to use the salt brine as a dust control agent.
It's a reasonable amount of money. It's not overboard. That's going to put us in bind if we need to collect, you know, tax, use tax dollars for the capital program. So this is the, you know, not the end all, it's the beginning. Now we have to incorporate this into our impact fee ordinance and then also create a capital program designated for these three projects.
I mean, the three components of what Steve, what you just described.
So we're going to the impact fee study itself.
And the study, right. What you need, what you would need to implement is the well and then the equipment.
Well, the well would be in probably phase two because we can, we can be provided the brine by providing the town in Narragansett with just the solid salt. And we'll pick up the brine to make it for us, I'm afraid.
Do we need a motion to approve this? Yeah.
If you do approve it, I get your color copies. Spend yourself on a detail.
I think, I think it should be said, I know I attended one of the sessions when this consultant from the firm that was engaged. I was impressed that they're doing this for communities all over the country really because the regulations regarding impact fees are, are rather stringent. So we need to be sure that we're compliant. And as, and I've spoken with Ken, the schools have been a target, but the schools are not, I mean, aren't a target. But paying our share of some of the costs, but they're not, it's only if you're expanding the capacity. And that's not the case now. So these, these, these have all been excluded as options. And this seems to be the one that makes the most sense.
And it should be noted that the impact fees have dropped from the current five thousand to a little over forty-seven hundred.
If, uh, if I was six forty.
Forty.
Look, look, okay. Well, slight, slight decrease in the current impact fee, which is for resident, for residential. Folks, did you need to, you want more time to address or can we move forward and approve?
Yes.
How entertaining was it to do that?
I'll make the motion.
That we approve, approve.
So you give back these things? And then once you work in the ordinance, it goes through, carrying all that, it goes with its own thing.
Generally, you can stop working on the next version of the ordinance. And they told us, if you will, the company will be able to help us see where we can do our ordinance, put this in. It should be pretty simple.
It'd have to be a public hearing, I guess, of the whole new ordinance system, correct?
Correct, yeah. But now the study, on ordinance.
Yeah.
So we're just approving, starting the study today.
Motion's on the floor, is it, our table rather, is our second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded that we move forward with, to approve the, the fee study, the impact fee study. Discussion, other? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Thank you, Ken, and your, and your, and Steve, and Lo, and Treasurer, and everyone on the side who will fool the best. Suggested, uh, prior, earlier by counsel that item C can be actually removed, a legislative section is anything that is word of anything on surface. So I, I would move that we remove ten C from the agenda going forward.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah, we, we do that.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, you, I made the motion for seconded, that's great. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. We come to ten D. This is one of the items that I'd ask Ken that we include in the work session. We might try to set up, Ken, but did, did we think that that could happen next week, essentially? And, uh, not next week. I thought, I, I thought that because the room was empty, I mean, open, that we would, but I'm not sure if that's enough time to address that issue.
The workplace harassment training?
We, we're going to discuss how that's going to go forward and, uh, Mr. Kove, were you available to talk to us? Ken?
Yep.
Counsel members, could you come by a week from tonight to address this and several other issues?
I won't be here.
Dan, you're away.
Yeah.
Other members of the council able to?
Probably.
I'm not sure of the days, this was what, I know this room was available. That's why I suggested it for next week.
Is there actual training you want to go through?
No, I, I think, well, why don't we just say.
Someone's going to come forward, come before you to discuss how we should proceed with it.
How, how, how we're going to, what, how we should proceed to make sure everybody's got, there are other things.
You want to ask me to review our policies? Did we do them and because of what?
Oh, can you talk about policies there? Policies. Uh, I, I, the, the following, next couple, two weeks after that are not good for me. It's one reason I suggested next Monday. Uh, Dan, I don't know if we can accommodate everybody, but we should work, we should meet soon. Uh, any other suggestions? Two, are you away all weekend or are you just, not, not Monday?
We're coming back Monday night, so.
Oh, Monday. But I think Tuesday, the room isn't available. Isn't that the second, Thursday?
And then Thursday's available.
Thursday's not.
That's the first, the Sunday. That's the Thursday, May, so that would be Sunday.
Thursday, the, oh, let me see, eleventh is a Thursday and seven is eighteen. Thursday, the eighteenth. That's kind of far out, but I'm just trying to pick a time. Counsel, trying to help us.
I told her.
We need help, please.
She's graduating from boot camp, so I have to fly out of Texas.
Well, I think that you need to be here, so I don't think we can do that.
Well, Monday, is Dan's only Monday, can't make the Monday? He can always stop me up.
If you don't mind, Dan, let's try to, because we, with some of these issues, there's a couple others. Like the item J is another one we need to finalize because there are several things here that we need to address.
That's Monday will be.
A week from tonight.
Week, the eighth.
And, and we'll, we'll add, before the meeting's over, Ken, we'll add. Yeah, well, well, lots of things is what happens and then we don't get to them. But let's put, let's put, what time would be probably, um, I prefer seven, but I don't know.
Six thirty.
I know, we can prefer it early. Uh, well, you know, we'll do six thirty.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Six thirty next week. And let's put, uh, power personnel policies on the top, you know, give a top billing because, Mr. Kove, if you could come, we'll work with you and make sure that we get this straightened out. And the workplace harassment training initiative would be something you can help us with as well, Mr. Kove, I believe. Okay, so we've set that date for a week from tonight. Uh, let's move on to, E, I think that's coming along, am I right there?
That one we can remove, we didn't give them any accounting.
No, I, I know, but it was, it's a good try, it really is.
They did restore it to the other cities in town that they took it away from.
Oh, did, oh, did they really?
Yeah. The ones that they had cut, they got back.
Really?
So.
Well.
You got left out?
Maybe another time. So we'll remove that. F, we keep, yeah, don't we have a, a letter of interest, Ken?
We got a letter from, I guess, the planning board that the mighty councilor, he, uh.
No.
Oh, this is the land trust.
This is, this is.
Oh, Scott Malau, the liaison.
He'll, he'll, he'll answer the land trust. Will I make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Our second, Scott Malau being appointed as the liaison.
From the planning board.
From the planning board to the land trust preservation trust committee. Discussion, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? G, comprehensive plan revision update.
I'll take that. Have a prepared statement for that. Uh, the planning board, this continuance review of a draft provision by the planner of circulation element right now. Uh, the planning board has completed four of the seven existing elements and two subjects, possibly new elements or may be included, uh, to one of the elements will be included eventually. And they'll have to be written from scratch and they would be dealing with renewable energy in hazardous conditions. Right now, four of the elements are completed. The economic development element, the land use element, the natural and cultural resources element and the open and space recreation element have been completed. Uh, the housing and facility services are yet to be done and the planning board is currently working on the circulation element that they were working on at this, at their past meeting, which I had attended. Also, I would like to address an issue related to the updating of the comprehensive plan that, uh, that is related to the comprehensive. It's regrettable that some registered voters at the financial town meeting were intended to undermine the council's efforts to support the planning department's much-needed increased budget allocation of time. Their behavior and demeanor displayed a level of ignorance and lack of civility that was disgraceful. One of them, as he has at many previous council meetings, continued to unjust, unjustifiably criticize and impugn the credibility of our town planner, especially as it relates to updating the comprehensive plan. Those reprehensible displays ultimately led to chaos and people leaving the financial planning meeting in shock and disgust. Unfortunately, that behavior, uh, leading to the, to chaos did not occur only from the voters at large, but also from the council table. The behavior from the council table only served to encourage more of that unmarked behavior and was inappropriate, disgraceful, beneath the dignity of the office of the, of that member of the town council. It's important to note that that behavior as it reads to the plan, as it relates to the planning department. The planning board should come as no surprise. There has been a long history of attempting to undermine their efforts and harass its officers and members. This chronic harassment and disruption culminated at a recent zoning board meeting where the most vocal of the planners detractors reveled in an uncontrolled rant that ended only when he was physically removed by the Dallas State Police.
He wasn't physically removed.
That's the end of my report.
Okay, that was, that was a comprehensive report, a comprehensive, for sure. Thank you, Frank. Regarding item I, I'm glad to see Stefan, I'm not glad to see you in the condition you're obviously in, what you're having about.
I have team effort.
I, I speak to that because, um, you know, Kevin, Stefan is our emergency management director and their concerns. I believe we've been working on a, on an MOU of concern to you, is that right?
Yeah, I think we have a, my own version made. This is, um, is this the one?
Yes.
Um, did you buy jam? Something, I think. Changes that we made and then Stefan agrees that that's what he was looking for. Uh, other than simple, I want to clean it up and one man a little better with the language. You know, roll the wax off. So is everyone aware of the history of how we got to this point?
No, well, that's what I wanted to know. There's been, some months ago, some conversation, I think some of it revolved Boom Lake.
It did, and actually something really good came out of that. And publicly, I'd like to thank the constables and Mr. Andrews for his help of, helping us finalize the emergency action plan for Boom Lake. They're, they're in the final stages, but any one of the organizations in, in the community, there's a certain amount of responsibility and expectation on the town and its services when there's a disaster, regardless of what it is. In this particular emergency action plan, it specifically mentioned agreements that need to be fulfilled with anybody that touches the plan. And it came out that we have that same certain responsibility. So this MOU is drafted from an all hazards prospect, not only for emergency action plans for the dams in the community, but for any particular plan that, that we could be utilizing here. Whether it's at an event, whether it touches our own emergency operations plan or what's going to be upgraded to a comprehensive emergency management plan in its next revision, even in our hazard mitigation plans. So with Ken's effort and, thank you, Lo, Mr. Maruzak, with your staff for doing it, it's worded publicly and appropriately that, for instance, when you dial level one, there's a certain expectation, the fire department rescue services will show up and they'll do their job. Well, same with the town services, particularly on the, uh, public works side because they're the ones that are relied more heavily on with the, uh, the constables and our own town staff. This just basically colors us to say, look, everybody knows their role and responsibility. They know exactly what their functions are. We are going to be constantly training them, but there was nothing in waiting that basically said that if we had this plan, especially with a private entity, are you guys going to do what you say you're going to do? And that's all this basically forward looks at. And I'm very pleased with the way this came out. It's simple, it's direct, it's to the point. Two pages, that's it, done deal. Read the rest of the document, it's over.
So, please let me ask you this.
Please.
Give me an example.
I'll, I'll give you an example of what just happened.
Well, with whom you would engage with that?
So for instance, Boom Lake has a, has a responsibility to have an emergency action plan due to the fact that they are in a high hazard area. It's listed as a high hazard dam because there's people that live around the dam. So if there's an issue and it washes out infrastructure. Everybody can imagine what could occur, not only within the community, but downstream. So there's expectations as to what services we can provide when that private piece of infrastructure begins affecting public property. So when Public Works will be activated to help assist gaining access. When we may need to bring in, um, it, it could be leading right up to federal assets, leading to the Army Corps of Engineers to help rebuild road systems along the state road so we can gain access to them, to provide services only from the town's side now, not from the fire district's side. However, it mentions, and there are agreements that Boom Lake has with them as well, as to what their roles and responsibilities are. So, uh, it, it just basically touches on that, basically if they call, you understand the components of your own plan that you've written and we understand it. And by us signing this, in addition to accepting the plan, because there are other components, that we're going to do what we say we're capable of doing.
But is it, is this not just about, is this only about the Anton town?
No, it is not. That we use it just as an example, I could go into.
Is there some other, other than, I, I know that could be a real issue.
If we get into an issue, say with a, a job corps, there's an expectation that the state expects the town of Exeter to assist them with an emergency like. there's an expectation that the state expects the town of Exeter to assist them with an emergency like we did. We had to evacuation during winter storm Nemo. We needed to evacuate the area and to assist. And there, those are private entities that are working within them. However, the state can only be in so many places, so many times. And even if you look at the town of Exeter's map, there's a big hole right there at lad where the town of Exeter doesn't exist. However, the expectation is that we'll take care of the problems that occur there. So this also protects our interests. So if we go in there, make these agreements, and say if public works, for instance, goes in there and a piece of equipment is broken, it's understood, and there will be additional documentation along with that, that there'll be a certain expectation that they'll help with reimbursable costs depending upon the circumstances. If it's a disaster event that gets to a certain category level where reimbursement may come into play outside of the private sector. It's just that there really wasn't anything that put our skin in the game. People were writing plans, and we just signed off on it. I didn't really specify to, are we going to do what we say we're going to do?
I think it's important, one of the few things you mentioned was the fact that they endorse green services in part too, because I know this was initially a long time ago.
That, and again, it's a very fine line because of it, because we're not supposed to go into that property at all. But if there's certain circumstances where I've got to get a rescue down there because somebody's having a life-saving issue, we're going to get in there, and people are going to do something. And under those circumstances, that's when we're going to stand out in front and do what we need to do to get it done. But the emergency operations plan will kick into a certain extent under those, under those issues. But right now, like I said, the dam owners are under a certain obligation. They have to have these plans. And there really wasn't anything that kind of covered us to that point. And that's why it was important to have this memorandum.
And so we're going to be asked to approve this, it's been presented to us. Ben, are you going to be the one that initiates the agreements with these various? Is that how this will work?
I think what I'll do is along with the liaison, and the council will obviously be apprised of it because eventually the plan doesn't need to be approved overall, regardless of the entity. We've got three high-hazard dams here in the community, two that are privately owned, one that's state-owned. I imagine.
Going back to dams, so, no, I don't mean to be confused. I appreciate you taking the initiative on that, that's true.
In all honesty, I think, like I said, Mr. Andrews had a big hand in helping guide the discussion.
In that situation.
But it worked out well. Something good has come out of it. And I can't even fault the planning process outside of the miscommunication occurred because I commend the people at Boom Lake for at least getting it done. And to that end, and it's just worth mentioning, August 9th, we're doing a tri-town dam emergency action plan meeting with West Greenwich and Coventry. Coventry's going to be hosting, and we're bringing in all the owners. And it's my hope that a template will be presented to our Exeter owners with that memorandum in place, understanding their obligation. We're going to have most of it filled out for them. We just need them to dot the i's, cross the k's. We're going to make it as easy as possible.
Yeah, I think it's important.
Yeah, let's speak to it.
I think it's important that everybody understand that the way this is going to work is before anything gets implemented and it comes back to the town council. So it's going to be up to, identify the entity, come before us, and perhaps even bring a representative of the entity to indicate what their side of the understanding is. Town council on a case-by-case basis needs to act on these. So the first one I anticipate will be Boom Lake, probably, I'm not sure if I had to guess, because they're the ones that basically spurred this on. But after that, it's not like Stefan's going to run out there and present people with.
That's what I was asking, yeah.
With an agreement. This is, this is a template. It can always be changed by this town council before it signs it in any given situation. So Stefan, you have to be careful about what you say to people.
Yep.
You could say, this is the form that we've been using, that we're going to suggest to the town council. It could be tweaked, should be tweaked, if it needs to be. But it will always come back to the town council before there's anything binding with anyone.
Absolutely.
And every way, that's understanding. So that's the way this is, otherwise I found it to be nice to have done.
So it's not even an assignment that needs to be adopted because it's.
It's a template that's being approved.
Was it recognized here in the minutes? Is that what we, they necessarily approved it?
You approved the form, but again, no particular agreement is approved until the entity is brought to us and a completed document is presented to you for your approval.
And that could be the last page of the planning process.
Correct. We'll be approving it as an amendable, as a form, as a template.
Mr. President, based upon the discussion, I would move that we approve the memorandum of understanding template as is. And as the solicitor said, we'll go by case-by-case basis as to each other party that's going to be a member of the agreement.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion is made and seconded to approve this template. Other discussion, any discussion? I just want to say thank you. I know this has been, you've had a very handy.
Like I said, everybody stepped up to help you the past couple of months. It's been pretty hard on a lot of the surrounding towns that helped him, Ken and.
Thank you, thank you. Other discussion, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Thank you, thank you, Stefan. Keep recovering, will you?
Absolutely.
Good try, thank you. This item J is one that we really need to put on that work session agenda. There were a couple of pieces there, if you remember, that we needed to approve.
It has to be discussed.
Yeah.
Do you want to put that on for Monday?
Well, if you would. Be sure that we deal with Mr. Pope and his issues twice. Long time waiting. Thank you, thank you. Moving on to reports. Ken, anything else to add, other than what you've been busy doing?
No, I believe so.
Is that right? Well, I had to give you this. Well, we've seen what you've been doing.
The only thing, the only, there's one thing on that track, ethics training that we continue to put on. This other one, I saw there was a letter actually in there.
There was.
She does call me, email me to remind me, but she's still willing to do it. So maybe in the fall, I'll tell her, because she can give states going out.
I know, one of the issues where they was kind of holding us up from moving forward, to figure out how we were there. If we're going to do it here in the evening, it's part of a council meeting and letting people to come, I mean, what?
I think a lot has to do with the sexual harassment thing. That's going to be kind of a pilot to see how, well, which things are pending.
Which we don't know quite how we're going to approach it, but we're going to, we're going to talk about that. All right, tell her that we're not adverse at all, we're just trying to, yeah, tell her that we, a lot of stuff happening here. I think it's important. I really think the discussion on ethics issues is very important. Thanks, Ken. Anything else? Mr. Jennings, Mr. Maruzak?
Unfortunately. Yeah, I usually say, no, nothing to report, but tonight I have some. First of all, Arcadia, I'll bring you up to date on that. As you recall, we submitted our full brief on May 28th. Unfortunately, Richmond's solicitor had some surgery, and she needed an extension of time. So Richmond's full brief is now due on July 27th. Hopefully, she'll be fine for that. I don't know. I have to look at her. I want to check in just to make sure she's okay. But it looks like July 27th Richmond will be due. After that, the state is required to respond. They, they asked the Supreme Court to extend their time to respond to both Exeter and Richmond together, 40 days after Richmond submits. I'm sure that's going to be granted by the court, it's kind of routine. So that will be placed, states brief due on September 7th or so, this year, on the Arcadia case. That means probably that the Supreme Court is not going to hear the oral arguments, certainly this fall. So we have a while to wait for that to get resolved. But again, it's much along, we've done it. Exeter has done everything and on time, that's all I can say. And we're just waiting for others to make a decision. Okay, so that's Arcadia.
Before we go on, I'm still intrigued that we've got an issue here that we, the prior council was concerned with, and now it's going to be.
You know what?
Before the Supreme.
Yeah, this issue, I'm thrilled that it's gone to full briefing because, quite frankly, it's a big issue. Whenever the state says that they're not, they're immune from local procedures to zoning or planning, it's, it's a big deal. And so many towns have taken the position, well, it's the state and we can't do anything about it. But this town has always taken the position that we are a home rule community. And since the people voted for home rule, we have certain prerogatives. And we're equal sovereign with the state when it comes to local zoning and planning acts. And now the question is, what happens when there's a clash between those two sovereign entities? And the Supreme Court hopefully will tell us this time, once and for all, exactly what they expect us to do, whether it's to go to statewide planning, whether it's to go to a superior court, which is what I believe should be done, or whether it's some other vehicle. We ought to be able to learn that finally, and it's probably going to not only benefit us, but also the rest of the citizens of town, so no matter how it comes down, because we do need directives on this from the Supreme Court, which is the only body I believe is competent or is meant to make these kind of decisions according to our constitution. So that is Arcadia. On the, our columns of solar cases, everything appears to be on target right now for the dispositive motion arguments on July 12th. Very big day for us and everyone involved in those cases.
That's a week from next round.
Yes, it is. And so that's a day of oral argument. It appears as all the briefs are in on behalf of the towns, also on behalf of Mr. Guevario's attorney. And it looks like most of them are in from the Green. There may be one or two responses that may be due, but I am hoping that the July 12th date holds so we have at least the arguments done, and then we would simply await the judge's decision on that. Again, what we're asking the court to do is make a determination as to whether or not the Green Solar Ordinance is compliant with the state comprehensive, or, excuse me, the local comprehensive plan. If the court finds that it is, then the matters will proceed, at least to a large degree, onto trial drafts. If the court finds that it is not, quite frankly, I think that that's going to have an effect on just about every single case that we're defending that could place the town in a position of disposing of most of the cases. At least in that, as to the most, most weighty issues that are before it. So that's a very big day for everyone in that case, July 12th. Third thing, which is fairly important, is I received requests from a couple of town officials to basically clarify what the duties and obligations and rights of various entities are when it comes to decorum at town meetings. In particular, this is a question that comes up time and time again. What is the town sergeant's authority? What are the town constable's authorities? What can these various officers do, particularly as it relates to duties at assemblies? Next issue was, is there a fair procedure in place as to how to deal with enforcing decorum at, at town meetings? And quite frankly, most of what you can see here, I've drafted two ordinances. And these are just drafts, and I want to circulate them here tonight. Often, we don't do that. Often, drafts go back and forth. But this was an issue of apparently great importance to many people who contacted me. So I felt it would be most appropriate to distribute these to the town council now, even though it's only a first draft. That means that anybody can take a look at them, quite frankly, because we're bringing it out at an open meeting. And so even our draft here, this draft, is open for others to look at. This is for your consideration. You could do with it what you wish, but here's what I've done. The first is an ordinance, and I placed them in ordinance form so that they will be codified if you pass it, whatever you pass, so that everybody knows. And the first one is an ordinance relating to the town sergeant and to the town constable. And what you can see here is what I believe is already in our law. It's not changing it, it's just placing it out there so everybody knows exactly what everybody's authorities and rights are with regard to those various entities. Glad that Mr. Donovan's here, Sergeant Donovan's here, so he can take a copy as well and weigh in on both of these, because he's a very important part of what's going on here. If you look at the first ordinance that I'm going to submit, pass it out to everybody right now. Sergeant Donovan, give me one now.
Ken, while you're distributing, you said we're already in, you talked about local.
Yeah. Well, I found it.
Not states, that.
I looked at state statutes, and I looked to our local ordinances, our town charter. And on the next ordinance, I even looked at our bylaws for the town councils, and use that sort of as a guiding light. So let me talk about the first one, the one that I just handed to you. That's an ordinance relating to the town sergeant and constables. We described in the first section there, section 201, the town sergeant. That comes almost verbatim out of the charter. The second section has to do with special town constables. You'll recall, we actually activated that a few years back. So we had annually appointed constables. Remember, we did a review then. The guys did a review, I did a review. We looked at state law on that, and we found that Exeter town special constables are appointed, or elected, excuse, important that we use the word elected, because it's a distinction that could have ramifications. While the sergeant is elected by the people at large, the council elects at a town council meeting special constables. And according to state law, it can be done for a year, any term up to a year. The council has decided in the past to do one-year appointments, and year after year, you look at it again and reappoint or appoint new ones. Their, their duties and that particular office is set out in section 2, that's 202. Next is a section on attendance in meetings. That's something, again, that's found in our, in our, in state law. There is a requirement, or at least an ability in state law in section, that says that the constables, special constables can. So it's nothing new, again. The last section, 204, has to do with disturbances at public assemblies. Again, this is something that I think is consistent with state law. It basically says that the constables or town sergeants and the executioner their duties can assist in removing somebody who may disturb the peace and also disturb or impede a duly-elected assembly, or, excuse me, a duly-constituted assembly, whether that be a commission, committee, financial town meeting, town council meeting, et cetera. So it's kind of an omnibus ordinance, which I put together just for your initial consideration. Should, this or something else should come back at some future date for more formal discussion. So this is only for your information at this point. The second ordinance dovetails with this one. And it also follows up on the concerns that were brought to my attention by various town officials.
Do you get a copy of that soon?
Okay, this is. Okay, this, this one is an ordinance concerning and related to decorum at assemblies and meetings. If you take a look at your bylaws, that this council has previously adopted, which was, which we put together based upon various sources, including other, other ordinances of the towns, state law, Hart Roberts rules, it simply talks about decorum at public assemblies. That includes, again, meetings and the like, whether it be a financial town meeting, a town assembly of any kind, that's a public in nature, conducted by a publicly constituted board, commission, town council, or assembly. And it talks about, just like your town council meetings, what's to be done, basically the rules of civility, and when those rules go past discussion and simple political statements or, or positions concerning whatever the business is, and turn into the personal, or the boisterous, or the disturbing, or it turns into a disturbance of peace. And so that's, this is, this is something that I think is probably a good idea from an issue not only of the laws, of the constables and the sheriffs, excuse me, the constables and the town sergeant know what the bounds of their authority are, but also so that the boards and the people that are in attendance, who may not know these rules, have fair notice, these are the rules, this is what we need to do, this is what happens if you don't follow these rules. It basically says, the chair runs the meeting. The chair has to keep decorum. The chair should ask a person who the chair believes is crossing over from decorum into disturbance of peace, and basically warns that person. That person, whoever it is, any person, would then need to obey that, essentially, and once again return to a civil discourse. If that doesn't happen, then the chair can ask for the person to be ejected from the meeting. One of the things that this also does is it brings to everybody's attention the fact that there are certain laws that can be enforced, including disturbance of the peace and interruption or disturbance on a town meeting, those are state laws. So the person who does this really runs the risk, not only of being ejected and not being able to participate, but also of being prosecuted. And people need to know that before they are prosecuted. They need to know that before they act, and they need to know that when they're warned. And that's just a matter of fairness for everyone. And that's what these two ordinances are meant to do. It spells out what the infractions are, and I believe that each of the infractions that are stated are backed up by state law or ordinance. One of them is that you can't also impede the sergeant or the, or the constable in their duties, and one of which is to take people out. So it's intended that nothing happens that is, ever rises to the level of assault. It's to nip things in the bud once they cross the line, but to stop them so that the meetings can continue in mortally fashion, and then so it's fair to everybody who participates, including other members of the assembly, other members of the audience. That's what these are intended to do. Again, I put them together last week at a time when it seemed like this was a very concerning issue to a lot of people. And so probably need some more work, but I hand them out to you tonight, and also to the sergeant. Hope that he can share them with the constables, because if there's any concerns, let me know. But I think this is, this is intended to do nothing more than what I believe is already in the law. But it gets it out, something that keeps coming up. Hey, what can we do, what can't we do? What is a, what is a constable? What can they do? Are they a police officer? And so that, actually, one of them deals with this. They are not a police force. I want them to stay away, as the councilist, from having to incarcerate. There's actually a state law that says that people can be detained by the, by the constable for a period of time. I didn't put that in this ordinance, because I think that that, that puts us in a situation that you want to avoid at all costs. What, what the state law does say is that the constables and sergeant can ask for assistance from anybody, which to me means the state police, because if you are involving an infraction of an ordinance, of a law, that's a law, or any of the state laws, such as disturbance of a public assembly, or disturbance of peace in general, disorderly conduct in general, that could raise to the level of where you actually need the state enforcement agencies. And that's the appropriate thing to do. And I hope that this helps so that people will know what their, what the bounds are, so that they don't need to be ever ejected, or escorted out, or held by anybody, or through the object of a complaint land. Took the hope of this is, so just to clarify this. And that's, that's my report on it, and I hope to hear back from anybody. You can call me at any time on your thoughts, and then when you feel it's appropriate, move forward with something, and we can do it. I can, I could make further revisions as people suggest.
I'd like, I'd like to thank a solicitor for doing this. It's obvious from past couple of meetings that this unfortunately is necessary. Well, and I, and I agree, and I know I, from when I began to hear some things that had occurred, and I said, talking to Jim, but he said others had as well, so I said, well, is there something you can do? But I, you know, I guess my, my couple reactions here, I'd like to put this on the August agenda, so we can actually look at it. That's my first thought, and I'd like it on the business items, both of these. But when you suggest that we review and see what we can add, or what we might want to do, it seems, I mean, you've already done a considerable amount of research on that. Well, we could talk next month about things that people see, or want added, or want addressed, but you've probably already done a lot of legwork. I don't know.
I have, but, but again, a lot of these things are policy issues. I'm not a policy person. That's for the council to set the policy. So if you see something in there, you want it watered down, you want it stronger, those kind of things, I'll tell you, okay, you can do that within the law, or you can't, but that's what I'm talking about. If there are issues that, that people have, or if anybody questions whether something is legal or illegal, I certainly would be happy to hear about that as well. So yeah, I think it makes sense to put it down. You can always amend, you can always continue another month, take a look at more issues that you might find, but if you feel it's important to keep it moving, that's, that's a great idea.
Only because I'm caught with the thought that, as some people say, rules are made to be broken, and there are plenty of people who look, not plenty, some will say, yeah, okay, big deal, make this work, which of course is not the intent, but that's what we have, no other choice, I guess. I'm thinking of the financial town meeting, what a directive were made to this, to this end, about civility, a number, and, and that was completely ignored, and I think nobody quite knew, including the moderator, how to quit a term.
Well, it's funny, because the financial town meeting is governed by state law, in large part, but none of this is inconsistent with state law. State law basically says that the town sergeant, sergeant has all of these powers to assist in keeping decorum. Moderator there has the power to make those calls. Also, you'll see in the decorum section that whenever somebody doesn't feel it's appropriate to eject or whatever, the body can vote to say no, no, we think that's wrong. So I mean, it's, it's not a simple one-person, one-rule, but if there's, if there's a challenge to it, it follows regular parliamentary procedure. It also says who can file out complaints on behalf of the body.
This is state statute, they try to, about, what you mean.
Again, it's, it's a, what you're gonna have in front of you is, is backed up, just by every aspect that I could think of, by either a state law, an ordinance, or, or an equipment, so.
Very good. Well, let's look at this again, if we could. An August agenda, please, both of these and the business.
I have one other item, believe it or not, and that is, there was a request that came in from Hal Morgan to my office through Steve Seipol, the zoning solicitor, assistant solicitor, and that is, Hal's concerned that we have a couple of sections of our zone ordinance that appear to be out synced with current definitions in state law. One of, one that he's particularly concerned about is in-law apartments. There's a definition in our ordinance that does not jive with the new state law, and he believes that it's in everybody's best interest to, to get the ball rolling on bringing those amendments into conformity with, with state law. He, he knows of the state law, so he, he's aware, he does not want to violate it, has not, but he wants to make sure the ordinance is up in, in compliance with that. So what I'm asking you to do is to allow me to engage in the first draft of an ordinance that addresses his particular concern on this one. Of course, whenever you're seeking an amendment to a zoning ordinance, there's a particular procedure, because you will need to send it to the planning board, get the recommendation, it's gonna have to be a hearing on it. It will be of a general nature, it won't be one of these individual, where you need to give personal notice about your, sort of, that, it's very general. But that's, that's what I'm asking for, these people who do that, should not be a real time-intensive thing, simply gonna be trying to draft all of this to this particular problem that Hal brought in.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful.
I think the motion would be allowed, Jim, to continue with that.
Draft amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding, any laws in particular, any more questions?
Yeah, that's, that's the one that probably is.
There's a second?
Second.
Motion made in second discussion, does it favor say aye?
Aye.
Hoes, silver. Thank you, Jim. Welcome. All of that. Just before we move on quickly, I had pulled Carrie's tax assessors report, just briefly, because as we know, she was very busy getting tax roll filed and that time in there, and as we know, not only was the roll filed, the bills have been printed and mailed, but she is very relieved, I know, to find that the motor vehicle roll back there, it didn't get changed, that she was afraid of supplemental bills, which obviously doesn't have to happen. So everything that needed to be done has been done. She indicates here that real estate and business personal property assessments as of December 31st are now available online and at our counter computer for Baruzo. The online GIS map geo website now reflects all recorded map changes and updated assessments through December 31st. Just speaks to the kind of work that keep being done in that office. I don't think there were any reports booked.
Yeah, there was.
But it was. I'm sorry.
Yeah, a report from the, as I said, the Capitol Project Building Committee for the West Grand.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
I have this, I'll just read it, and then give it to the court director. The last meeting of the Exeter West Grand's Capitol Project Building Committee was June 25th at the junior, senior high school. The architect presented a preliminary master plan, capital improvements consisting of extensive renovations, and in additions at all the schools, including extensive site work. The capital improvements, that we implemented over a five-year base construction schedule, had an estimated total cost of approximately, please cheat it, eighty million dollars, with state reimbursement of eighty percent, which means sixteen million, and pro-rated, if the seventy percent would be eight million, it's about, it's here, we'll take the chunk of money. Capital improvements are based on renovations and additions to accommodate twenty-first century education criteria that include health and safety issues, space needs, and providing career technical education, as opposed to increased student population, which is projected to remain approximately the same. And this was a question I had raised with Ken about our impact study, whether this, whether we would accommodate this or not, but, but basically, it can't because it's the impact that's based on increased population, that's the thing. So based on what schools looking at, we're looking at large sort of money, that part of this, the, 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 the.
That's an, I missed the very, that's an application that's been put in? I mean, that, that they're seeking the funds, right?
They're going, yeah.
LeBron, that was a quote. Going to seek it, that, that, that's the plan.
Right.
And once all the money's goes to urban cities and stuff, maybe they'll look at that as well.
I don't know how it's back here.
I, I, okay. Thank you.
Any questions? Who'd be left, though, to do it?
Any questions of Frank on his report? Thank you, Frank. I think that was all.
That's it.
Any administrative issues anyone wishes to bring to the table? Carrie, no, we move to communications, and I think one of them, let's deal with the one that addresses the raccoon hunters problem.
I know you just, you asked, well, who wants to speak to this? Dan, Danny Ford?
I'll speak to it, 'cause originally, I got this in an email, a letter.
Yes, we all, we all. I sent it to everybody, and then we, then we delivered it also.
The very item you're talking about, that road, I questioned it that night, and I was told, everybody's on board with this. And then I get this, and you were never notified, so.
No, that's not true. He was notified, they didn't receive notification.
He didn't receive it, yeah. Well, it wasn't notified, so. My question is probably to Jim, how do you reverse this? Do you have to go back to a public hearing?
No, well, not necessarily. Okay, look, there, there are a couple issues here. Actually, I'm glad you're here. I'll share you, with you what my thoughts are. First of all, the state law concerning abandonment is pretty clear. It says that, this is one thing for sure, it says that when a public roadway is abandoned, the fee, the ownership of that road and the land underneath it, goes to the abutting owners of property. So there is no way that by, through the abandonment process, you would become, upon abandonment, the owner, that is, your organization would become the owner of the, of the underlying fee to the property.
So even though the access road that we have that is on the plot books?
That's the way I read it, yes.
It is our connection to that road.
You're connected to it, correct, but you don't want, you are not an abutting owner of the fee, because the fee, that is the title to the land, automatically reverts to the abutting owners, owners. So what you are is, you're the holder of an easement, okay? So there's no way that you would, that, that it can be abandoned to you. Now, that's not to give up our hope, though, because as I understand it, you've got a piece of property that you do own, that has no frontage, but does have an easement, that the conservation society has given to you, or in a sense.
No, it's two easements.
Okay, tell me about that, because I don't know enough.
Is, is the one that's on the plot records, which is our original, which is directly connected from our?
Is it a written document?
It's, it's on the books.
When you say that, what do you mean? Because I.
I looked it on the, the map geo, the map geo, the outlines, the, the map that I had.
Okay, that's not good for me, okay? What I need to know is, do you have a deed or an easement that's in writing that says?
I can look up our deed that's in the, the state deposit files.
All right. That's important, because that, that may govern exactly what your relationship is with the conservancy as to that portion.
So the conservancy one is a document that was created about four or five years ago with them?
You predated it, right? You had something there before.
I had something before that, correct.
Okay, we need to look at that, you need to look at that, the conservancy needs to look at that, and any other dated documents that there are. A map generally is not something that people can go off of, okay? It's usually something that's for convenience. It will show what was once a public look at that, and any other deeded documents that there are. A map generally is not something that people can go off of, right? It's usually something that's for convenience. It will show what was once a public roadway, and it may even show your right of easement, but that doesn't make it, that doesn't change your legal ownership of the fee. In other words, usually when you have an easement, the person who gave you the easement still owns the property, you just have a right to use it. And it's good, it's a good right, okay? But in other words, you're not, you're the owner of a right, you're not the owner of the land, you're not the owner of the road. You may have the obligation to maintain it, you might have the obligation to maintain taxes on it, just anything else that the opponent does, but in the law, unless you've got a deed to it, you probably only have a right on easement. So that, and I'm not, I can't really give you advice on that because I don't know, I haven't even read the reasons. What I have read is a state law which clarifies who the owners are and who's entitled to notice. Notice provisions say that the owners, the abutting owners of the property are entitled to personal notice, which is the one that we attempted to give you anyway. So town was actually notifying you despite the fact that you are not an owner, an abutting owner of the property. So there are a couple of unfortunate things that happened here.
So even though nature gave me, and I have a title to their easement, right, that's abutting to the road, it's not?
It's not changed by what the town did, okay? You still have it. You still have whatever easement's out there. The easement may very well say that you have a right to go through the conservancy property on this particular route till you get to Stony Lane. Stony Lane is now somewhere else, okay? It ends, so you may still have a right, and from what I understand, the conservancy is not challenging your right to get to and from your property, over your property. And, and so what I'm suggesting is this, I suggest to the council that you place this down, say in sixty days, for a status on it. In the meantime, it's really important, I think, for you to get straight with the Conservation Society. And if you do not have a deeded document that brings you all the way out over what is now their property.
That was my next question, that was that question I asked.
Then you should, then you should, you should talk to them about that. Now, if they want the town to get involved in that, if there's anything that has a hit, pick up on that, such as, for instance, I don't know if there's still this idea of having a locked gate where certain people have, have access to it after, after the town road ends, then we could probably help with things like that. If anybody needs to know what the town's perspective is on things, we'd be happy to add, if I do sense. But really, what this is boiling down to now is, I think, you can't be landlocked, I don't believe, given the fact that you've got a easement that took you to what was Stony Lane, still may take you to Stony Lane, quite frankly, but that, again, is an easement, private easement, that gives you certain rights. And so the party that you need to be dealing with is the conservancy, and from what I've heard from them, we even ask them, will your right to use anything be? My direct?
May, may.
And the woman who is there.
My challenge is that the nature conservancy is going to cut us off from electricity rights and things like that because they will not allow us to do any of that.
You can address that, and you can address that in an easement as well. I mean, what you have now.
We've already created an easement, and they will not give us any electricity rights about that.
You know, quite frankly, they don't have to.
Correct.
Okay, so, so the point, and I'm not, I'm not acting as your advisor right now, really, you can get a lawyer who can mow this all down. I don't know, you know, that's what they're there for, you know? And so, but, but I'm just telling you what our, what our honest perspective is on this from a legal point of view. There's no question in my mind that the town cannot give the deed to an abandoned property to anybody other than the owners, without that owner's abutting owner's consent.
If the deeded road, if we find the road, that original road, if we are deeded to that, so that means we own that road, that means we own the road, abutting the road.
Don't confuse a deed to the ownership of the land with an easement. Two different things, you know? An easement is a right for you to travel over.
That's the one I just.
The ownership is what the town is concerned with, because when the town abandons the public's rights to it, they don't take the fee or keep any part of the fee to it, it becomes a private right, okay? And you've always probably only had a private right. If you have a deed to a forty-foot strip that goes over what is now Stony Lane, or was Stony Lane, is now the abandoned portion, which I'm fairly certain you don't, that probably would have been given to the town to make it a public roadway in the first place. So my, I'm fairly certain that it was either a roadway by prescription, by, you know, by, maybe by, by being set out by the town fathers in the seventeen hundreds, God knows where it started. But the clear thing is, when a town abandons, it needs to give notice to the owners of the land on both sides, and then when it is abandoned, when the, when the roadway is abandoned, it reverts to the owners on both sides by state law, okay? That's what the ownership goes to. Again, if you've got a private easement that, that you had beforehand, that's probably just as enforceable today as it always was. So you'd be able to go out, but now it's with, now it's, it's a private issue, it's not a public issue, you know? It's not, I have a right.
It's a private problem, their absentee landlord, they don't maintain nothing.
You gotta get in touch with.
Mr. President, may I, may I address this issue? Mr. President?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah.
I have a, I have a bad mouth, people.
I'm caught up with, with what's happening.
I just want to try to short circuit it in the interest of time. And so, so I'm the liaison public safety, and it was brought to my attention, this has been an issue in the past, this was a public safety issue, and, and I'm sorry, you guys, I was wondering why we didn't have you guys in to talk about it, and I'm sorry about the mix-up, the town did what they had to do. What I'd like to propose is this, the conversations with the nature conservancy was not to deny you, the raccoon hunters club, any access, but to change anything. Did you, did somebody just receive some sort of a new deed?
Not yet.
Okay, and so, so the understanding was, and I know we need to follow up with this, was that the nature's conservancy was going to give you guys a new deed, and they want to have their lawyers drafted.
Correct.
So why don't you shoot me an email tomorrow? If you can find the deed that you have now, send it along, and I'll, I'll try to coordinate between the club, nature's conservancy, to make sure everything's done right. I don't think we have to.
The next thing we.
Did, did you mind if I finish?
Yeah, go ahead.
That's fine. And so, so rather than going back and trying to rework something, we want to keep you and the club in the same situation it was, I don't know if the nature's conservancy is going to change any of that, want to change that, it was all done with the, the abandonment was done with the understanding that the status quo would remain. So I assure you, it's, it's going to remain, if you shoot me an email, I'll get in touch with the nature's conservancy, and if we do need to, we'll set up a meeting between us and we'll facilitate what needs to be done.
All right. Can I say something?
Sure.
Hang on just a second, let me catch my, Manny, when you're going to work with these people on a deed, the one thing that they're going to need the deed were we abandoned Stony Lane, their right, before we abandoned Stony Lane, it was their right, if they had the money, National Bridge would strength power that. Now that we don't own that, it's got to be in that deed, it's called an overhead easement.
Sure.
They're going to need that in that deed to get their power.
And I don't think nature's conservancy is going to object to any of that, so.
They've already told me now.
We asked them to add that into the deed, into the lawyers, and they said, no, they won't add that.
Well, that was before this is done, so let's try to facilitate something.
I'd love to come to positive resolution.
Because if my path's working with National Bridge, if you don't have that in the deed, they're not getting that.
I bet they won't.
Because they also, the one fault was why gravel road, the entire way with that pole side, so, I mean, that, this was some of the points I brought up at that hearing, but like, nobody's here, so.
Yeah. Keith, why don't you just reach out to me, write an email, and, and we'll set something up, we'll get a meeting together, right?
Okay.
Then nothing's going to change for you guys.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
You're welcome. Just let me ask you just one question, because I thank you, Manny, I know you jumped on this because we needed you as a liaison, but now you said they're not going to allow you.
My discussions with Cheryl, no, that was two weeks ago, because I called her, was she called, I called her because I heard about this, and I said, what's going on with the abandonment? And she said that the town has given them the rights to the road, and they're going to write a new, new agreement. And I asked them, well, what about our rights to electricity and stuff like that? She said she would bring that to the lawyers. The next day I got a call that they're not going to give us rights to the electricity and poles and high-speed incidents and stuff like that. So that's what concerned me, and that's when I wrote that letter to the town saying, you know, this is going way further.
Had you planned to do this prior?
I want to make sure that fifty years from now, we can do these type of things and maintain and put cameras and, and stuff up there to monitor, because we've been dealing with the fires and the kids playing out there and everything.
The question was the whole reason the town abandoned it.
Yeah, we've had, we've gone through three gates. We've gone through three gates over there because they run their cars into our gates and smash them, you know? So we've been paying tons of money to fix things over there because these individuals are having parties down there, and nature isn't doing anything about it. There's a fire pit like four hundred feet below, below us, and I've told them, why don't we take all the rocks, the boulders that they even block that off, stop these kids from, from doing what this must be doing?
We're the ones that are cleaning up the road.
They're not doing anything.
And everything, they don't do absolutely nothing.
I don't even know when they go down there. We have, like I said, we have seventy members that go down there for meetings every month, and we have events every, every month, so there's a lot of traffic from us doing that.
That's why we were happy that we were getting the road maintained, because then it wasn't damaging, like Danny's vehicle got damaged and stuff.
Yep.
So, because we're having, we're a whole new board now. We got, we got rid of a lot of the other riffraff that were in there that weren't doing nothing, and the place was going to crap. So we're starting to build it back up, now we want to do other functions there and stuff. Now, we actually purchased a backup so we can do a lot of maintenance on our end. We did all the maintenance on our road, and, and we've done maintenance on the main road until we talked, I think, Mr. Matt Jack there, and he came up and did a lot of maintenance on it afterwards. And even then, we would, we would only call like before a function, we would go up there and we would see a couple of things washed out, and we would say, hey, you mind if you get up there, we're going to have a function on such and such day? And it was, everything was going great, so I don't know where all this all of a sudden came from. Kids have been partying there for thirty, forty, fifty years, you know? I got friends of mine that their fathers used to party there when they were kids, so I mean, it's nothing new.
We're just trying to reduce that.
Yeah, I mean, we've been trying to stop.
This was part of the council as a public safety issue and measure, we agreed that it was a public safety issue and measure. Rescues weren't being able to get in there on a call recently, and we made the decision to abandon it, but we'll do what we need to do to make sure that the right one lasts for state.
Great. Thanks, Manny.
Before I let Steve speak, keep in mind that the fire chief makes it one to come to us to say, we can't, you know, we can't get to the potential for fires. We were hearing these stories, and Manny listened, and all of a sudden it became, I mean, you say it's been happening thirty, forty years.
It's been happening, it's going on forever. It's nothing new.
I want Steve, because he was involved, please, Steve.
Well, you know, you guys talked to me, and we were talking, I said that the gate would end up, if this happened, if the road was abandoned, the gate would move out to, down by the house, it was just reconstructed. And they've given us permission to put that on the corner where it's visible by his cameras. So people will no longer be traveling in. Your, your physical lock that you have right now on your gate will be moved to that gate. You'll be able to unlock that gate, okay, with your own existing keys, okay? If you have an issue, you want to change your lock, you'll be able to at any time. You'll still have the same access you have, except you don't have to have another gate. You don't have to worry about the gate, it's going to be a municipal gate. So you don't have to worry about when people run it down, your lock's going to be on it, your lock. On the other side will be nature's conservancy's lock. In the little box that's locked onto the side of the gate will be for the fire department, or police department, in case they need to come in there at one of your functions, for instance. And you lock the gate behind you, they'd be able to open the gate, because there'll be a key in there to unlock either lock by law. And then, but you still have your legal access into your, right up where you have it now. Nature's is going to extend that for you out to that point, which is McQuade's, the intersection of McQuade's property. That little section from the gate to McQuade's is still remain as an unmaintained town road, all right? We keep it so that the fire rescue can get in there because of the problems we were having. We're not supposed to fix the road, I know I've had the conversation with somebody in your organization about the fact that we're not supposed to. We did it to let the rescue to be able to get in and out realistically.
Well, that was, that was the main thing with.
Now, you guys got the benefit of it, but realistically, it's for them, for public safety. By moving that gate out to that corner, now if anybody stops there and is going to try to cause trouble, there's cameras, there's a house there, it's not up in the woods where they can park and party anymore. All those problems will go away for you guys. And you know, all you have to open is that gate with your existing lock, and you'll be fine. And you'll be able to get right up to it.
Yes, the others have not, we actually built a deal.
The other side will be locked as well. You can't travel through that side anyway.
Right, impossible, but.
Yeah, it's because of the pond, that's going to be blocked off as well, right after the radio tower.
Yep.
My biggest issue is no electricity, no high-speed, I can't do anything.
I can't control it.
They're going to, they're going to block me right out of all of that, so.
They're not, you know, everything, you know, with not being able to access any sort of electricity, any sort of municipality, the property value decreases immensely, so we definitely got to get that in there, that, that we can put power in if, you know, when we need it.
Overhead easement is what you need in that deed.
Right, yes.
That would have to be in your old deed as well. Your old, actually, it's not a deed, it's an easement, but it would have to go into your old one as well, because they're not allowing you on that either?
No, our original one, our original one that exists there, that's the original one.
They've just lost their right.
And nature's, because they're roadway, they're right, their access is through nature's conservancy, they're saying, no.
Yeah.
Right? So either way, you're sort of stuck on that power thing until nature's conservancy decides they want, they want.
They have to hire a lawyer.
Unless there was another way through West Greenwich, I don't know that.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming in, I'll talk to you guys, all right?
Talk to you in time.
Public conservancy meeting.
See this gray hair?
He's a little, he wanted to.
That's funny.
They did previous council gave, and me and Ray around the. The Air Force is easy, it's eight weeks. Nine weeks now. Don't they let we?
Okay, council?
Yeah.
Shall we, shall we continue?
Yes.
That was fine, but thank you all for your input. Frank, Dan, your other item that you pulled was?
We already discussed it, seventeen appointments.
Okay, and another one?
The other one was an appointment, too.
Okay, all right, fine. So in that case, well, regarding executive session, I just wanted to know, clerk, did you want to address the one where, so I, being asked, there is a personnel issue that would you do it there? But please.
I have two minutes of time before you go to executive.
What, what is that?
Because I've been informed by my wife that my money is, my memory's not as good as I thought it was. You are correct. It's two million dollars. I wish I could have apologized in front of the whole crowd instead of a small group, but the.
Well, that's kind of a big difference, you know?
It is, and it's not my intention to inflate figures.
Yeah, I know you have a concern about a lot of things, and I, that's your title to that, but this, it gets to me after a while, that's a big number.
It is, and when I make a mistake, I do apologize in front of.
Well, you know, you don't owe me an apology, I, I'm always wondering if my, I'm thinking my memory can't be this far up.
That's why I need a wife to keep me in order.
We all have those. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
I, we need a, we need a motion, I'll make a motion that we enter into executive session under item D, personnel issues. And there's a second, those in favor say aye. I propose that a clerk has some news he wishes to share with.
So Ruth has been out of work since May.